I do want to draw your attention to make a type of draft change that is made on the very first page of the Dobbie Board, eleven forty-seven forty-three. As you read these, you get sometimes at a degree of you don't pick up that there's an error in which county it's named. In this case, the dark heading in the middle of the page should read, "Now therefore be it ordained by the Marlboro County Council." The previous versions you had seen said Dillon County Council, even though you immediately refer to Marlboro County and the next line and all the other lines. So it is probably the type of draft error. So it presents for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions. I took a second look at this with a closer eye than I did the first two readings. And if we only benefit from one percent, what's the point of having this industrial park with Dillon County and this agreement with binding for thirty-five years?
It gives them, them, the industry, different incentives, better incentives if you're on the industrial side than it would if you're dealing with a single entity. We have joint parks in our county that are shared with other counties, other counties involved, I think like the county and Lake Inchesterville County, I'm not sure. But we've shared, counties have shared back and forth, and so it's, this one, we were requested to share. Our only benefit is a one percent.
So they requested to share because it looks better to say as multi-county.
Yes, and it ended up in the higher.
Well, is there any, I guess, just all trying to learn about these things, is there anything that we're giving away that later on we might want for ourselves?
Not my knowledge.
Because we don't own making the land.
I knew you had.
Yeah, but we can, in my mind, you can turn around and then have a Marlboro-Dillon park in Marlboro County if you need it to have.
There's not this negative.
There's nothing negative.
It's a completely positive process.
Well, can we have the opportunity to recruit industry to build a location at park?
We could, but I don't know that that's not my priority for Marlboro County. It would be more of a priority for Dillon County maybe to put someone in that park. We would want to be here at the county, I would say.
So if it wasn't that, they would get the land and they won't get the one percent.
That's what I'm saying, but when somebody approached us and said, "We want to be in that park."
Well, you could certainly refer to them and they'll go in.
Well, we will, but then we don't get one percent.
In some ways, we compete with yourself, I see what you're saying.
But it's all Dillon land.
Yes, yes.
And I saw that we have zero percent of, okay, make this whatever, okay.
Thank you much for the good information.
All right, Mr. Moore, there's motion, we have a second. Mr. Black, we have a second. Call the federated right in. Oppose, we have a board of opposed. Moving on to new business, ordinance seven forty-four. This is the ordinance modifying the Marlboro County Rescue Agreement with the squad providing permanent level emergency service and transfer services to the rest of Marlboro County.
This chair of members of council, as you, as you can pick up from the various numbers, you had this agreement ordinance with Marlboro County Rescue for this would be going on. Maybe that's, maybe even longer than that, but obviously it's ordinance modifying and modifying ordinance six number seven, number six, and seven thirty-seven with ordinance seven forty-four, which was a one-year term last year. It was written that way to give the rescue squad a chance to get a feel for where they might stand with the hospital posting. Remember last year at this time or during the budget process, we were just worrying about that and what it might mean for the rescue squad. Since putting this on the agenda, I have had meetings with the, with Jeff Bell, I think it was captain of the rescue squad, I'm not sure who it was, but the leader of the rescue squad. And we are probably going to be asked to negotiate some funds for the rescue squad this year, a slight increase or an increase in funds for the coming year. But we can still get this first reading out of the way because it takes place over, this reading will take place over the next two or three months at the same time we're doing budgets. So we'd all be in at the same time, but we weren't sure whether they would be asking for money or not. But I think, I think from what I'm hearing, they would like to have a consideration of the injuries from Marlboro County. So we're asking you just to consider it and tie it on for this reading. We'll get back to numbers as we begin to develop the budget.
All right, Mr. for title, for title-only first reading, ordinance seven forty-four, we have a question to ask. Mr. Wood, second. Call the federated right in. Issue matters. All right, Resolution O three one six oh one, resolution dated the month of April, South Carolina Fair Housing Month for twenty sixteen. The resolution, it says, this is dated the month of April, South Carolina Fair Housing Month for twenty sixteen. Whereas the county of Marlboro desires that all citizens be afforded the opportunity to maintain a decent, safe, and sound living environment. And whereas the county of Marlboro rejects discrimination of bias of race, religion, gender, sex, national origins, discipline, and promiscuity status in sale, rental, provision, and other housing services. Whereas the state of South Carolina enacted a South Carolina Fair Housing Law in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas equals recognize national fair housing law, now therefore be resolved that the county of Marlboro does this in a equal twenty sixteen fair housing law. That's the resolution. Resolution O three one six oh one. All right, Mr. Black, you have a second.
Second.
Go ahead, I'll federate your right in. All right, our focus of all this information is really important. All right, I'm going right along with one of our focus. It's the same.
Thank you, Chair, members of council. The county of Dillon has a favorably speaking expenditure for a sixty-two percent of the funding amount. And this is about four percent under budget for this point in the year. Residents for a sixty-nine percent of the funding amount for this year, and this is a huge improvement from the past month. Residents increased two point five percent from January, and we're finally able to see that much anticipated tax collection results. We met with Mr. Jordan, our auditor last week concerning the audit, and he's continuing to work on the whole new draft. However, due to recent turnover in office, he's now short-staffed and could not yet give us a definite completion date. Budget request forms have been given out to the department heads and are scheduled to be submitted to the finance office no later than Monday morning. And then we'll begin a special meeting with the department heads to discuss funding needs and the trends in capital for this. There's been more interest in the local government funding legislation. Prior to such section of the only website, the state budget's projected recurring general fund growth this year is eighty point seven percent. The total additional funds available to the general assembly this year will equal one point three billion dollars. Fully funding the local government fund had acquired by statute would require only less than nine percent of that new revenue. The governor included one hundred thirteen million dollars in her executive budget to fully form the local government fund's primary revenue. But the ways the needs committee has failed thus far to provide any increased funding to the local government fund. The failure of the general assembly to increase the local government fund caused the county's of power to be forced to increase military rates to be able to operate state mandated departments. But these increases will not be necessary, or at least will not have to be as much if the local government fund was funded and were included in the statute. Any questions?
The chair of members of council, the, as we are, we're following the fully recognized five-year service of the county through the end of February. Lawrence Barrington, twenty-nine years, Juan Ball, thirteen years, Lawrence Brand, fourteen years, Ron Peck, twenty-one years, Vanessa Dally, six years, Anna Frye, seventeen years, Barbara Layton, twelve years, Dr. Prince, fifteen years, and Kevin Thomas, twenty-seven years. If you notice the, I think it's pretty obvious if you don't drive past it every day and get used to seeing them, but they're historical markers that are throughout the county. There's something like eight of them, large metal looking markers. We've had them taken down and taken to a professional sign maker to be refinished, basically. I think we've been trying to do it ourselves, but they may look in the past, and some of them look like that. And so, so with this, the new signs look pretty good, and we got, we got them back and have them, have them re-installed where they're supposed to be. And so we have got some compliments on how the signs look, and we're making sure that they're bolted in place properly so someone else doesn't end up with one that they're on. The animal shelter director, Mr. Bethune, has provided a report for January and February. There were six euthanasia procedures, two adoptions, and a hundred and five animals transferred out. Those are rescues they go out to different areas where the dogs can be put in the home or given the home. We have a hundred thirty-four stray dogs and forty-three cats picked up from two months, with seventy-nine D from the Vensel area. And that's in general, this is this area. Twenty-one from the Ball, twenty-five from the Lem, twenty-nine D from the Flyo, twenty-three from the Wallace area. And the phone calls actually seem to have slowed down, so I think we are making some headway. And I'm sure there will always be dogs and cats that have to go phone calling out, but the calls in our offices seem to be slower than that. We have had a distemper break out at the shelter. We're spending extra time every day disinfecting and coroxing and cleaning in an attempt to make sure it doesn't spread any further. And we have lost a couple of dogs from the distemper that we didn't know had the distemper. And it seems that when we get the dogs in, we do vaccinate, but there's like a week-long period before the vaccination actually takes effect. In fact, I think the vets would tell you probably longer than that, but I think a week for the distemper. So we're, we had to count back and see who can come in during which period of time. And anyway, we've frozen all the adoptions, we've quit taking any dogs in until we can make sure that there's a certain period of time to go by, something like three weeks, where we don't have anybody developing, any dogs developing distemper, then we start, start the process and do it again. The, as I've notified you, we are advertising for a D nine emergency care director, current director Roy Allison, has reached his limit in how many years he can work. That occurs this summer. It's been advertised in the local paper, posted on the website, and picked up by different organizations throughout the state and out of the state, we're beginning to hear from some of them. You do have in front of you a draft letter to the Attorney General. I want you to look at that and make sure that you're okay with the wording. Attorney Easterling will be sending that letter, assuming he hears no problems from council, if he makes the changes that could suit fit to the letter. We've also forwarded a letter to the South Carolina Department of Transportation, and that's gone. You don't have, you don't have a copy of that, I don't think, in front of you, but I think you received a copy last week probably about the roundabout on Highway thirty-eight North. And to date, we still haven't received an answer, although I noticed that the paving seems to be completed. Even though this morning I noticed that the Beauty Spot Road is still closed in both directions, I'm not sure how it stands late this afternoon. But even though the paving and the lighting and the signage seem to be up for the circle around about, those entrances from Beauty Spot or exits on Beauty Spot in either direction are still closed, and I'm not sure what that means. We have applied for a rightful park walking trail grant. And I think the, I remember the notification date, the big middle of summer, February, July, and we'll see how we go from there. But we have a fairly strong application, we had all the information that they needed, and we received some free help from some architects and engineers who wanted to do some over for us and so forth. So they were willing to help us put together some information for the trail grant. We have received offers recently, and they may have actually begun to get some of these units today. Yesterday at noon, Gary Harrington was telling me we've been authorized to get some heating, air conditioning units out of the buildings in Wallace, and Wallace still. To move, in general, they'll be, most of them, if not all of them, will be moved to the gym in Blinn. So that would make, once installed and connected, that would make that gym a year-round, a year-round gym to be used. And in fact, in the office, we talked about using that area for our next year's Christmas get-together, our dinner. And just to first of all advertise to everyone that's there. And it gives us, it gives us the incentive to have the materials there, the chairs, the tables, the things we would need, so that other groups can use it. And obviously, we have gone through the process of obtaining those things that we might need for that kind of, for that kind of get-together. So again, we plan to have that, assuming of course we have the heating that we need right then, if we have some good problem. As Angela said, the budget, budgets are request forms are out, the department, they're coming back in Monday after about a week or so. We'll, we'll have some preliminary numbers, give you a chance to get some numbers. And I know that Chairman Stein and some of the others have talked about getting together, having work sessions, or just talking about budget and what we're going to do in the future, projects you may want to do. And once I get a feel for what we see in the departmental budgets, and assuming there's no surprises there, or no big projects that I'm not aware of, and how the numbers come out, we can talk intelligently about other things that may want to do. And that's the only reason I would ask you, just to give us enough time to get those goals. Kind of work being, we don't have to have an exact total, but give us a chance to have our mind wrapped around what we have to do. We've received notification from the Lee County landfill that there's an increase in their tipping fee. That's the fee that we charge, that we are charged, we take waste there. It's a, there's a small amount of waste that goes there, but the tipping fee is going up from twenty-eight forty-nine to thirty-one forty-one. And that'd be effective in April first. South Carolina Emergency Management notifies us that they have extended the time period for receiving comments about hazard mitigation programs. And you asked what that might be. And in general, it's a, it's a methodology that would be used to give out funds if we had a disaster. And it shows up in your, in your handouts, but that, and it originally began to be color-coded, but twenty-five percent of the money is expected to go towards housing. Damms in the area, twenty-five percent of the money allocated. The planning itself is five percent. And then other, which rounds out to be whatever the damages and problems that you might have, or that might show up as being something that could happen in the county, would be forty-five percent of the dollars set aside for, for the county. But again, if we have comments individually or as a group, let us know, we'll, we'll make a comment. Again, it's time, as a reminder, to file your statement of economic interest report. Again, it has to be done by March thirtieth at twelve noon. And if one island that you don't have in front of you, we have a planning commission meeting scheduled for next Monday, March fourteenth at six P.M. Here in this room. There's currently one vacancy on the board in District Six. And the appointee for District Five, Mr. Brown, has not been attending the past two meetings. So we're making an all-out push to get everybody there. We'll see who attends, we'll notify you after the meeting. But these meetings are important when they happen. They don't happen very often, maybe three or four times a year maybe. But usually it's because we have a request of something that's come in that we need some action on. And, and so we struggle to get the training, to make the board members active, and then we struggle to get them to the meeting so that we can't take whatever action it is we need. So I would ask you to consider that when we, when we let you know how the attendance has been, to get some good folks on the board if, if we have a problem with attendance. I appreciate any comments, and we'll answer any questions if you find out.
Question, second? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we have one citizen that asked, she's named Miranda Adams from the Rockwell Castle.
Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Lorenzo Adams, and I am the president of the Marlboro Area Parks Council. And that may not mean much because I know we've been really quiet. And as December, when I took over, one of the first things I did was rebuild the boards because, as Mr. Han's saying, when you can't get people to show up, it's hard to get things done. So, and we have been in with a lot of teachers around the area county schools, so now we have a lot of art teachers on board. One of the first things that we are planning to do here to make sure that we revive the artist council, as well as the community, which of course artists is very needed in the community, is have a festival. And I'd like to invite all of you out to our first annual, annual, so we can do it again, St. Patrick's Day Festival, which is coming up on March seventeenth. And it's going to go to the Haas Square. I definitely like to thank the staff, it's been awesome, they've been great assisting us with everything that we need. And we are going forward with it. It's again, going to run from three P.M. to seven P.M. That's the time it's looking at right now. So I just hope that I get all the employees off the building so they can come and join us. Right, you know? But, you know, it's the first one that we're having, and we definitely plan to have many more this year so that we can keep our community active. And make sure that we bring the arts, not just for young, but to, you know, the elderly as well. So again, I'm not here today to ask you guys for money, but I would be backed definitely to that. So, but again, this is an invitation to make sure you guys know that we are going to be out there on the seventeenth. And I would be glad to see if you're generally out there. Any questions?
Thank you. Hold on, let me, a little more than we decided to speak. Council members, what's your worries?
I think anybody's fine, I got the public think, public workers come around and move that somewhere to go. You know, with so much rain they had, I knew, I don't want to benefit that. But Mr. Wallace and his team, they came out there and did what they could. Just, like, there's so many, you know, bedrocks and, with a lot of rain and poor drainage, you know, you just can't do it so well. But he came and did a little something, and the citizens are all happy, pretending, they ain't happy. They don't pretend, but just another rain, come and did, I hit it again. But besides that, we're all good.
Thank you. I just want to report, I went after the last meeting to the city for the recreation idea, and there were some questions overall. And I think most of those questions are answered, I think people will be supported. They did pass a letter of support from the city. And there's been a couple of meetings with staff and the architect meetings, just to give us something on paper that we can then just look at and argue about and change around. And that's about done. And so probably, you know, not next week, but next week would be scheduled meeting where, you know, you bring in larger groups and just let people look at it, pick on it, and see what we have and don't have. And, but I have to say the things that have been drawn out as far as the fields down here look really good, and it's like it would really work. But the other parts that are being worked on, that have to do with mental swimming pool, which I've got that type of facility, and that's being figured out. So within the next two weeks, I'll have some plans to look at and go further. I don't have anything other than I did notice the turnaround. Thirty-eight Beauty Spot had been paved, I'm starting to, I think you sent us an email, starting to agree that they designed it for your runoff on curb, which is how a racetrack works as well, so I'm using that approach now.
Well, you are better than that.
Trying to act like you're a little crap.
Okay, I had the budgets going to our national conference, and it's a whole running process, it's real good. One of the things to start off with, a strong council, which fortunately we have. What, what makes a strong council is really the chairman, the vice chair, council clerk, minister, and the attorney working real close together. And between meetings, because we only meet once a month most times, right? And then the chairman bringing what was discussed between us back to full council, so that full council knows what's going on, this way everybody is in the, nobody's being left out. And that's, that's really, really important. Workshops is important, committee meetings, and with reports coming back here again, is everybody knowing what's going on. As long as all eight of us know what's going on, we can stick together, but when you come down, you start getting stuff out the street, you got a problem. Legislations, wow, okay, that's really, really important, something that we now do, that we need to do, is work real close with our other chain, which is very, very important. Also, I always say city council, I thought it was just Benesfield, but it was brought to my attention twice, which is what you pointed out, what I do, that we have more than one city here in Marlboro County, city council and mayors, right? That we all need at some point to get together for, right? And to discuss it along with our school board, right? That way we can look at everybody's ideas and resources and pull them together, to see about, we moving all forward on one page rather than everybody knows what they're doing. That's, that's, that's rather special. The other thing is our veterans. There's over two hundred counties that got veteran committees, right? And we're real close with the veterans, and what you find, that a great deal of your veterans, problems they have, suffer from PTSD, right? A lot of them are homeless. They go to jail for minor things that they don't have to go to jail for, but people just not known the problems, it's just like a mental illness, it just locked them up. If we have a committee, we get a committee together to work with that, along with our veterans administration, because they can't do all, our veterans office can't do all of itself. So this involves the police forces, right, both on county and cities, right? To work together on that, and that will make a big difference on helping our veterans out. And I forget, I just want to tell you, I did have the homeless veterans we got here in Marlboro County, you know, and we suffered from. So we really, really need to take a very, very close look at that, right? And I can say that it belongs, I said it for two days, right, and you go on and on. But launching these events really make a lot of sense, and you can pick up a great deal of information where we gather, we're close together. And we, as councilmen, we work really good together, where we need to stretch it out and go outside the council and work with all the coyote, everybody else too, bring everybody in, especially the school board. We need to bring them into our.
I tend to a little summon, appreciate economic development in the county for funding this event. And this year was a little different from those in the past. Last year they celebrated the twenty-fifth anniversary. This year, the focus was on interpersonal skills with people involved in economic development in rural areas. And a big part of that is being prepared for unanticipated interviews by media. And how to answer questions that reflect the county in a positive light, what to do if you don't know, what to say if you don't know what to say. But always being prepared because the media can be your best friend or your worst friend, depending on the information that's pitched to it. So thank you, Mr. King and the county, for that. So I do literally network with people, just learn new ideas, different kinds of things. So I encourage council people to go to meetings as frequently as you can because it's beneficial. March twenty-ninth, there will be a health fair from eight o'clock to one P.M. at the community center. This is sponsored by the Marlboro County Coalition Committee. They will do some screening, the comprehensive screenings are available for free. They ask that you fast overnight and be there eight for that. There will also be the trucking, the mammograms for women. There's a whole list of information about that, I will bring the flyer with me. I can email it to Ms. Patricia, and she can put both flyers out to you announcing this. There are these other things going on, two different events, different presentations. So it may be working about the twenty-ninth is the Friday. So it's for families, some for adults and children, so it should be interesting. I want Mr. Han's, he didn't mention in his remarks, but I want to thank you for looking into the situation in all the acres, because that's been of interest. And it's good to know that the G I S system was helpful. He did a comprehensive report about twenty, twenty feet of fall from highway nine. Uh, we did a comprehensive report, uh, twenty, twenty feet of fall from Holiday Nine, and the fact that the land is like a bowl shape, reminds me of Duars in Katrina, and a certain amount of runoff is going to happen anyway, so I don't know if there's really a logical, uh, not logical, a remedy for that, because of the way the subdivision is designed and positioned. And that some people will get runoff from their neighbors no matter what, their ditch is there that's most work. So it may be that, um, we could have, um, some type of flyer information, or meet with, uh, some of the people in the community to explain this, that the county, uh, as far as we can tell, we have, um, extended every possible avenue, other than picking them up and re-grading the land so that it falls a different way, but unfortunately, that may be something that some of the residents, uh, don't know. So I do appreciate the effort that was taken to gather all this information. So now the people know that the county has not been negligent in trying to look into, um, the situation that's affecting them. So, uh, thank you and Mr. Stevens again for that, appreciate it. And Mr. Smith, if you need some more information, uh, you can talk to me, you can talk to Mr. Haynes, on how they have to get the information out to everybody, because people need to know, um, just what the situation is. There's no remedy at, at hand when the county is calling.
I just want to wish you good luck with Arts Council and everything, and everything that we could for you and today they have.
I'd also like to extend a compliment to the clutter work. Things, things, like, um, if you can get two in front of your ass, so can the bus, and so can the rescue squad, so... Have improved a whole lot, but at least it's getting back to where they're functioning anyway. And they've done all they can do, and believe it or not, the ground's still there. Wouldn't be able to have some guy named, they've done as much as they can, but I wish we could do more, but that's a process.
Well, a couple of things, Dr. Prince was glad, as I said, we went to the winner meeting for Association of Counties, and the only thing they talked about, look, go with funds, and, you know, the way, uh, they said there was a problem in the way it's, the formula, the way they fund it, but nobody's willing to take a stab at changing the funding formula, so, I mean, he was asking, you know, we've been some of the big counties, counties like Horry County, they asked about look and go with them, you know? And so when there was big counties with, their meal was two or three million dollars versus ours, still need look and go with them, amazed what it does to our small counties, so everybody in the, in the meeting was asking about look and go with them, you know? We just, there was not going to be a relief from what, uh, representatives spoke of, so we didn't, they said there was nothing, the meeting changed, so, uh... So that was, so that was the thing. And some, some of our standing committees that we have, uh, you know, nobody likes meetings, but we have a lot of stuff we want to be doing, uh, twenty sixteen, and, uh, so what we have is our meetings, uh, starting this month, and as Mr. Haynes said, you know, probably in April, the end of April, we want to have a council retreat, you know, we've not had one of those since we've been here, maybe a one-day council retreat, where we can really talk about things, you know, you're not pushed for, uh, time, or trying to do anything, we're having a budget declaration, just have some ideas and look forward to that, so we want to do that. And so we're going to really try to, uh, just keep moving forward, I mean, we've been moving forward for quite a few years, and, you know, we want to just continue to strive and move forward, so, uh... And with this, Dr. Prince said, Mr. Haynes has put in a lot of time on the, on all that acres thing, and, you know, we can, we've, we can really say we went from the beginning all the way to the end of that, you know, this, this is. Dr. Prince has had some ideas and tried to look at some things, and, uh, everybody's brought everything they could to the table, so we, uh... We, you know, we have, yeah, everybody will chat, reach out, and chat, bring to different things, it's, it's just work better as a camp, so it's better as a camp, so... We're, we're thankful very much for that. Then I have another next, we have a motion to adjourn. Two, one, second. All right.